A soup for dinner. Sharon real just before this. And I like express two seventy five was backed up like crazy so I saw. So I went to Reed Hartman. To Bondale Milford down seventy one. Oh, my God. It was brutal. I would be smart and picking the quicker way, but it was not quicker.
All right, guys, welcome to our uh regular monthly trustees meeting rescheduled for Tuesday with a scheduling issue for tomorrow, which is typically on Wednesday, but appreciate everybody who uh came out for this. Um, and we'll go ahead and get started. Debbie, you want to call us to order?
Mr. Freeman. Mr. Kelly. And Mr. Campbell.
All right, and uh, what's Sherry, you want to lead us in the pledge? Cherry Burger. Thanks, Jerry. Sherry, Sherry Burger, Sherry. Do we have a burger, burger? All right. Regular minute approvals.
I request the motion to approve the minutes of April the eighth.
So moved. Second.
Motion second roll call.
Mr. Freeman. Mr. Campbell. And Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
Departmental updates, Chief Rock.
As you know, the uh, the levy did not pass a couple of weeks ago. As a result, uh, Ms. Schwa, uh, Mr. McCarthy and I are going through the budget and kind of analyzing the police budget to see what reductions we can make in the coming months. And even further than that, looking into twenty twenty six. That's all I have.
Good evening. Fire department updates. So the the new fire engine we hope to to have had at the meeting tonight, it's out getting the graphics finalized. Took a little bit longer than needed to because all the cutting and the roll up doors. Most of the equipments and mountain audit, we hope to have it in service by the end of the month. Uh, brief flood update. Thank goodness, we're mostly out of flood season. Uh, we did have um twenty impacted structures in the township. Only two of those had major damage. Now, we did report all that to emergency management. We worked on submitting all the public assistance and cost recovery documents. And at the last update, we got the county was forty two thousand shy of the state established threshold. Um, I know the the state was reviewing everything um to s- see where everything fell and then looking at all the other counties to see if there were any other other counties that came into play for the state total for federal funding. So we haven't heard anything back on that. Um, unfortunately during the flood, we did have a minor accident with Deputy Chief Masterson's car, one of the overnights in the dark during flood operations. He did clip a pole. Um, so we've we're working with Ms. Schwa and Otama to get those repairs done. We're looking at like three thousand dollars or so in damage. Speaking of damage, we did have one of our ambulances that was struck on um I four seventy one. Back last month, it was actually one of the Ohio Township owned ambulances. The unit sustained substantial damage. Fortunately, both of our members were they were banged up but not injured. The patient we were transporting was also not injured. So we're working with Ohio Township and their insurance on that currently. My next piece is a recognition of Roy Short, Jr. Roy, if you could come up to the front, please.
So Roy started with township in two thousand and one as part time firefighter paramedic. He's remained a valued member of our apartment. Working through our transition, we added a full time staff, expanded our services to the Ohio Township. Construction opening station forty five, numerous population details submitted had so many times their functions. Not only was Roy a fantastic firefighter paramedic for us in our community, he also was an apparatus operator, fire inspector, fire investigator, and road up as an acting officer, indeed. Shares experience, knowledge, and perspective with our other members on a regular basis. Firefighter paramedic short with a matter of the mentor that always has always put the community first. Outside of his role with us, some of you may or may not know, Roy was also also known next door as Assistant Chief Short, Central Joint Fire Investigator. Through his role in district, Roy helped us collaborate from each late training between departments. Shared public relations events with us and our business group, most importantly, helped us create an automatic incident dispatch for certain run types. So that we can serve our residents and businesses better for both communities. Though Roy's leaving us after twenty four years of service to our apartment, department, community. Monitor congratulated and announced he's leaving us because he's the new fire chief, Central Joint Fire Investigator. So Roy, thank you. Thanks for your service to our organization, our community for so many years. Thank you for being a friend of the fire service, being a great neighbor, and most importantly, being a friend for all of us. The luck in your new role of for our apartments continue to develop are a great relationship.
Good luck in the new roles.
It's been a great experience. And it's always been my community. It's been very discerned, my family, friends. And it will always be my community, and most of all, we show up in the back of the room. And that is my first.
Thank you, Roy. Chief Ray. Now we got a swearing in of one member or multiple members.
Um, so we we do have a series of motions that would tie into that. Um, but it's your pleasure if you want to do the motions and we can get that out of the way, swear them all in at once. Sure, and that'll clear out the majority of the room.
Gotcha. But uh, numbers of those, so I can kind of just speed to them.
Number six.
Okay, so you want to go ahead and do the swearing in?
Can I do the motions first?
The motions.
You're swearing in all of them, please.
You're up.
If I request a motion to approve the appointment of Ron Jones as a full time lieutenant effective June eighth, two thousand twenty five at zero six hundred hours at the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement and to serve a one year probationary period.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Freeman. Mr. Kelly.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Morgan Haney as a full time firefighter paramedic at the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement step two. Effective May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five at zero six hundred hours.
Motion.
Motion. Seconded.
Second roll call.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Freeman. And Mr. Kelly.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Spencer Abrams as a full time firefighter EMT at the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement of step one effective May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five at zero six hundred hours. Pending successful completion of a pre-employment polygraph examination, shall serve a one year probationary period and must become an Ohio certified paramedic within one year of appointment, noting that all associated expenses be that of the township.
So moved. Second.
Motion second roll call.
Mr. Freeman. Mr. Campbell. And Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, and I request a motion to approve the appointment of Sydney Clem as a full time firefighter EMT at the established rate per the collective bargaining agreement of step one, effective May twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five, zero six hundred hours. Pending successful completion of a pre-employment polygraph examination, so serve a one year probationary period, noting that all associated expenses be that of the township. Polygraph has been completed, we are just awaiting written results, and I did receive those today for all the candidates.
Motion. Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Freeman. And Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. If we could do this where again, sir, I appreciate it.
What are we doing? One at a time here?
We could do all assembly launch.
It'll just get really confusing when they say state your name. It's actually more how much he hates them.
We'll try to read this in chunks, our vision reply in unison will just sound a little funny when you guess your name part. So I solidly swear or affirm, state your name, I state my name, solidly swear.
Told you, I told you, I said it was gonna get confusing.
Let's try that again. Say I, and then where I say state your name, they're gonna say your name. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm. But I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
Law of the United States of America.
State of Ohio and Pierce Township.
State of Ohio and Pierce Township.
To which I am appointed and to the best of my ability. Will discharge the duties of this office. I will faithfully and honorably.
I will faithfully and honorably.
Strive to protect our future.
Strive to protect our futures.
Protect the safety, lives, and property.
Protect the safety, lives, and property.
Of our citizens and my fellow members.
Of our citizens and our fellow members.
Thank you.
The big crowd.
You can stand behind you if you want.
Anybody wants to get a photo?
Never mind.
Less, I mean, I want to turn it over here. I don't want to talk about this. You were gonna do that. No, 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 you, you, you.
I tried to lean down on it, but I felt like I was actually leaning it into it, so it's like. I don't weigh up, am I still in the photo? And I'm like leaning down.
Plus your head, it's the bigger it appears, like the mirror in your car. You're always in some weird love.
All right, Chief Ray, you got anything else?
Anytime.
Let's let's let everything die down.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, okay. Probably want to wait on that one.
It always happens this way. Is it something I said?
I believe many of you are aware of those are about as I have to announce. A long time time employee retired Chief Scott Mike passed away over the weekend. So we're working with families funeral services will be in there on Thursday. The last night eleven thirty, the funeral service that we we following. I think everybody in the community knows Scott in some some form or fashion. Try and put some information out on Facebook and just try and make sure that everybody is is informed about it.
It's kind of funny because um, I I can't tell you how many people this uh, since we found out about Scott's passing. Um, have come up to me and said, you're you're part of Pierce Township, right? And I obviously said, of course, and they said, did you know Scott? And, you know, of course, we all know Scott, and every cer- single person that came to me and asked that question had another story about Scott, and these are people that were far removed from Pierce Township, but they knew him and and each one of them had a bit of sadness um in their heart because we lost somebody so special. And, you know, he was, he was an interesting guy. When we went to Columbus, we had great uh, great fun teasing uh, John. And Scott was usually right at right into it up to his neck, so. Yeah, it was just kind of, you know, a shock when I found out, but it was just also an even greater shock to just just see how much, how many people um, Scott's Scott's life touched, so.
He served thirty five years here.
Yeah, amazing.
I shared with Daddy earlier, I'm I'm speaking at his funeral and I'm struggling. Not because I don't think I can do it, but a lot of the best stories was Scott can't be shared publicly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Service Director Kohler.
Good job. That is.
Did uh? Is this going to be under your report? Or whose report? Um, will we see the discussion about White Oak and the decision to pave it in twenty five instead of twenty six?
Yeah, I have an update item to discuss it. If you want to do it now, we can do that too, whatever you're.
Whenever you're ready, Greg. I just, I wanted to make sure that that was in there. John, I think you were part of that as well, so. Give those good work on all on all fronts. What's that? It's always a fight, but at least we won with one one battle at least.
All right, uh, John, you got anything else? All right, Doug Parks.
So a lot going on uh with events, so um Easter at last and the new light went off, great great attendance, great weather, we've been plus. So uh, I guess uh, was the one discussion on easier at on the parks committee meeting, so uh, that administration. Um, and moving like this was great, really good attendance. First possible requirement is June twenty first. So a lot of things uh, you know, the chief group was going to be there canceled. Um, so they do their pack up, they said Carl Saturday night, Mustang group, so they uh, said they're available. And so um, you know, we have a summary to follow up on that. Uh, you know, together um, to go with the details. Well, the July back three things going on. So you can have one day this past Saturday, uh, prosper the church, kind of citywide. Volunteer, and they reached out, put my law with ten days, so we uh uh, put in the work and planned a few things at the entrance to go to park and also it's um uh, so kind of cleaning up some of the beds over the storm as well as taking some plants that are lighting spaces there, so. So they'll be looking for opportunity to get next year's. You have another scout project they presented uh, beginning a lot just adding up. Good all for scouts.
Thank you, Doug. All right. Carl. Our uh planning and development, oh, I'm sorry, we have a new. Christine. Christie or Christine? Christine, welcome. I don't think I've been in the meet yet, I'm sorry. Selsner? You want to introduce yourself and hop into an update?
Uh, yeah, Christine Seltzer, I'm the new uh community development and planning director. Um, we've got a few development updates, the Amelia Health Center, that's the building that's been sitting partially constructed. That has been approved by Board of Zoning Appeals as well as zoning commission. And then for uh, the next one, the shopping center that's next to Kroger. Um, Five Below has been approved to do a commercial addition at the end of the the shopping center that's kind of on the left near, I think there's the Wendy's more towards one twenty five. So that'll be a Five Below, and then there's an empty tenant space as well. Uh, then on the grant front, we had an opportunity to apply for some funding support through uh, the Higher Department of Development's Housing and Technical Assistance Grant. We asked for thirty five thousand to work with a consultant to update our zoning code to be consistent with what we've already identified in the land use plan, so text amendments and map zoning map amendments to bring the zoning code up to speed with where the land use plan is. So if we would get that, that would be the consultant doing the work. And then um, the final update is for the cannabis zoning text amendment that will be on the Claremont County Planning Commission, actually tonight at their meeting. And it will be on the Pierce Township Zoning Commission meeting on June third.
Um, quite quite well, first of all, welcome aboard. Can you just uh, just quick, I know in the interest of time, but what exactly in the Amelia Health Center, what are we looking at there? Kind of skilled nursing, different levels of care or what?
Yes, it is skilled nursing, there's two levels. Um, so there are, it's about, is it a hundred and twenty units?
Yeah, it's about a hundred, over a hundred units, and there's going to be uh, seventy two full time staff, probably. Uh, most of which would be nursing staff and then sport for those. Uh, they're going to have some of various different numbers of of units that provide specialized care for those that um more or less the same kind of medium longer term. So it isn't quite a lot of independent living, but it is a good amount of skilled.
So no assisted living or anything like that, it's all skilled?
Is that fairly consistent with what the previous use?
And the other part of this too is that one thing that they discussed is conceivably uh
or thank you, the uh expanding potentially elsewhere on the property as well, but they want to get this initial kind of investment up and up and running first, and then they they have space where um, independent living, I think might be more of a component for them.
Good.
Is this on um, TIF?
Yep, so move it into the other updates. The uh, one thing you'll have later on your agenda is a um is a motion for a TIF on the Amelia Health Center facility. Uh, we're showing is a ten seventy five, so the way that that process would work is we get a motion passed by this board and then we would send notices to schools. And that would give them about a two week period to respond, and then at your June meeting, you would have a motion to formalize the process and we would establish a TIF.
Got you.
So the Victorian property sold within the past two weeks. We will now be working with uh, Batavia Township to close out the remaining properties on our side of the township, so I'll be working with Fiscal Officer Schwa to get that finished later this week, early into next week. So uh the manager at Walmart reached out and stated that they were working on a mural that was effectively paying homage to um, this this general area of Claremont County. And so what they requested was, in addition to East Fork and some other monuments in the area, they wanted to get a recommendation from us as to um, a particular structure, site, or something that we would like or recommend be painted on their entryway. So I let them know that I would bring it to your attention. If you have anything in mind, I'm happy to share that with them as well.
I liked your ideas, the Morris House and the Houseerman House, those are both land, I mean landmarks in in this area. For our structures, that is.
Maybe something police related to the amount of time that you guys spend up there. Good front of the entrance to the police station or something.
Yeah, maybe what they could do is just paint the car and just put it at like at the base of it so that it looks like there's a car stationed right there.
If done properly, it may work. To some extent.
I like that idea.
It's kind of like an owl or something, a fake owl that once they realize it's not. I don't have any good ideas, but I like the Morris House and stuff, something sort of iconic within the township, so. Uh, Eddie, you got anything else or Jimmy?
I'll share that with them. The last item I have is the White Oak Waterline easement request, so we don't have a formal motion on the agenda at this time because this was placed on hold due to the entirety of the White Oak uh, water main project and damage on the roadway. So we reached out to them and they have been going back and forth with the contractor and Ainsley Napke reached back out and stated that they are going to be moving their originally planned twenty twenty six paving of White Oak up to the twenty twenty five plan, so it will actually be repaired and repaved earl- far earlier than in originally anticipated. They're also going to be doing some other uh, work to repair particularly the edges of the roadway that are crumbling and that sort of thing. In addition to that request, phase two of their project necessitates that we that they purchase an easement from us, which would be the property across on White Oak across from Super Sam's. And so they need about point oh two acres and they have that proposal. And I printed out a number of copies for you if you would like to look at it, but they are, they're offering one thousand six hundred and forty three dollars for this project. They're stating that the chain link fence in the area is to be removed and replaced to pre-construction standards. And they're also going to purchase all the trees and shrubs within the limits and permanently remove those trees and shrubs. That is our current proposal. So if you're so inclined, I could put a motion together to proceed on this. If you'd like anything added or perhaps you would like this part as part of a greater agreement or a condition added, I can do that as well. to proceed on this, if you'd like anything added, or perhaps you would like this part as part of a greater agreement or a condition added, I can do that as well. But they are currently looking to purchase an easement from us.
So I did see, uh, an email that came across from somebody at the county, um, stating, I don't know if I'd go as far as to call them promises, but stating, um, some commitments, uh, sort of loose commitments via email that they were gonna move up the paving and do certain things about the road, but this is, uh, like a collaboration, right? So we all have to kind of give and take a little bit and collaborate with the county to get this stuff done. Um, and I would kind of like to see something a little, a little more of a solid commitment on some of this stuff, so that then we can help them out and we can all collaborate together on something like this and a and a little bit more of a, uh, um, uh, official, I guess, or codified form of, of, of what we're, what our plan is, other than just a few emails shooting back and forth, and that would make me feel a little better, uh, moving forward to ensure that everything is kept in a pretty good condition for the residents, because it was a lot of our, of our, our, of the board and you, Eddie, and some of the residents that, um, also added their, uh, opinion about the, the White Oak Road and us kind of taking that and and putting a little pressure on, I think that's resulted in some movement and some, uh, you know, um, that road being in a little bit better condition at this point, so I don't, I don't really wanna pull back on that too much.
Yeah, I'll be fairly direct. Um, I'm not inclined at this point to agree to any kind of, I won't vote for any kind of an easement with them until I see movement. Um, when someone says they'll do paving in twenty twenty five, what does that mean? When are the, when will the trucks be here and you tell me that date and I'll wait? When that happens, then I'm happy to vote yes. But right now, that road still isn't in quality, that, that, that condition is just, is sad. And I just think that, you know, if I, if, if we give in now, I just think that they'll just say, oh, well, we'll get to it around August, September, October, November, oh, well, the, the plants are closed now, so we can't quite get to it. So I'd rather just kind of keep this going.
So this easement, um, was there a diagram in the packet or, um, is it a linear easement, like along the side of the road? I just wanna make sure I understand what we're talking about.
It's right along White Oak. And actually share this with me here. All of that's gonna happen additional comments, but it's okay.
Okay, thanks.
This small space right here. Point of two acres, yeah, it's right on the edge of White Oak.
Where's Super Sam's?
I think, and while we're at it, what's going on, what's going on with you and, and, um, Bradbury and, um, then what, what other streets did you say?
Right? Um, not the entire. Well, at the top and at the bottom, um, there was a water main breakup at the top from when they were shutting on and off the water up here. Um, the one, the white one, and the road is, they patched in one area. But all outside of that, the road is like it roded out from underneath it and it's real wavy now.
Right.
And it's a fairly new road.
Exactly.
And I, we were supposed to meet today on site, but they canceled because of the rain. And then, um, and then we're also about the condition that the road is in at the bottom where they came across from Slaven and then down and down, um, Bradbury to Nine Mile is horrific, it's not good.
How about, how about we fix the stuff you broke? Then we'll talk about an easement for stuff you're going to break next.
Would it be, would it be good for me to?
Yeah, I.
Set the targets for them or?
Go on.
Would you like me to reach out to them and have them attend the meeting or set target?
Be very happy to hear dates.
Okay.
When will the, when will the pavement, paving trucks be on site? When will we know that this is gonna happen?
Okay.
And then and only then will we entertain the notion, I mean, that's just my view, I'm just one of, one of three, you guys chip in here.
I, I would tend to agree, um, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure, I'm assuming in your contract language that you're going to have some verbiage along the lines of the completion of their paving project is approve this satisfactory before we take that next step, because like John said, some of the work is pretty bad. Right? And will that be in there?
Yeah.
We have to prove of it, in other words, it's satisfactory, it meets our standards, and then we can talk about the easement. Yes?
That's right. Okay.
And that's not just that it be done, in other words, you know, that we approve of it, you know?
I mean, I hate to be difficult, but I enjoy being difficult.
Well, something along those lines, they have shown good faith to make these offers, uh, I think since we've started down this path. Um, I, and I don't disagree with anything you guys are saying necessarily, but I would also, I don't, I don't mind what they're, what they're coming back with at the moment as far as their, their willingness to, to make this right and, and to make the best progress that they can and to up the, the road paving by a year and stuff, I, I think all that's pretty good. I would just like to see it like, uh, Dr. Campbell has mentioned in a, in a con, in some sort of contract, more than just an email, that's the part that really bugs me a little bit because you know, sure as heck, we're gonna do everything and get it all, and then it turns out it's not a collaboration anymore, once we give in on our end and then you know, uh, everything drags out and there's an issue for why they can't pave it next year all of a sudden and um, you know, it looks like, uh, something out of Mad Max again, where you're trying to dodge plates and I think we had four, it's, to my knowledge, four pop tires on the plates from that road, people who busted their tires on the plates that were there that we know of. Other people may have done it and not bothered to report it, so anyways, I'd just like to see a little something more official.
Okay.
One quick question about the patients, the paving may be moved up to this year, is there, are there any other major infrastructure projects that are gonna, about which you're aware? Will there be electrical, gas, whatever, sewer?
Yeah, so we did, did receive an update on legendary trails, and so we're gonna have a pre-construct meeting coming up in the next thirty days. Believe it's within the next thirty days, uh, they're gonna be replaced, they're gonna basically putting, be putting in a grinder system in order to, uh, remove the septic systems in that area, so everyone will be have better sewer systems in that space. We'll have, we'll share more information, I think that Chief Craig might have some.
There's also another lift station elimination, uh, end of nightly, they're gonna tie it.
But that's not gonna affect the White Oak project, right? They're not gonna come back in and tear up part of White Oak Road, right? About what you're aware.
The section of White Oak that they are proposing to work on where they're requesting an easement, there would be significant construction in that area as part of the space too.
So they will break.
Yeah.
The rest of White Oak.
Yeah, okay.
It would be nice for them to fix the pieces they break. Before they go on to.
And not disrupt it again right after it's paved, you know? By point.
Right.
Okay, all right.
It doesn't sound like the additional projects are gonna do that, so just this one project at the end of White Oak, which will be the same kind of mess that we've already enjoyed.
Right.
Just phase two, phase five, whatever.
Uh, so you mentioned the legendary trails, um, so they, there's a full communication.
Okay. Yeah, we received an, uh, an email from the engineer's office, uh, within the past couple of days about it. I can give more information to you though on this and have them reach, reach out if you would like.
Yeah.
If you'd like their content information and everything. Okay.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure that it normally, normally sending notices out is part of their process, but the earlier the better, obviously, and more frequent, so I'll make sure that they get in touch with you. Sure.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Eddie. All right, so, uh, we wanna hop into, looks like new, new business. Debbie, you're up first.
Okay, I request a motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of April in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars, sixty-eight cents.
So moved, second.
Motion in a second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of April in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, seventy-six cents.
Moved, second.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
I request the motion to pay Claremont County Treasurer in the amount of four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents for the twenty twenty-five stormwater permit.
Motion.
You might wanna explain a little bit about what that is.
This is an annual payment with a stormwater permit with the county, um, that we pay every year.
Uh, okay, uh, seconded.
That's all, that's it.
Motion in a second, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Is that it, Debbie?
Yes, sir.
All right. Chief Brockster.
I request a motion to pay a Flock Safety Incorporated invoice for twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The invoice covers phase two of the Flock camera program, which involves the installation and one-year lease of eight additional Flock license plate reader cameras throughout Pierce Township. The township will be reimbursed for the full cost through a twenty twenty-four Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services grant.
All right.
Uh, how many more phases are there, chief?
That's it.
This is it, okay, all right, I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
Motion in second, roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
All right.
I request a motion to accept the resignation of full-time Lieutenant Dylan Rains effective May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five at zero six hundred hours.
So moved, second.
Motion in second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kabelis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Just so you're aware, the, the lieutenant promotion from earlier in the meeting is filling that vacancy, not creating an additional spot.
Oh.
I request a motion to approve the appointments of Brooke Hart and Colin Lloyd as part-time fire EMTs at the established rate effective May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Pending successful completion of pre-employment physical and social over one-year probationary period, noting we're just awaiting the results of the physical for Mr. Lloyd.
Motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to approve the invoice to St. Elizabeth Business Health Services for the Township Employee Assistance Program in the amount of three thousand, one hundred dollars, noting this expense is divided among all apartments.
So moved.
Uh, second, is that a one-year agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second.
Motion in second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And I request a motion to approve the purchase of one Akron Mercury Monitor and one Akron Apollo Monitor and associated stack tips and equipment from Vogapool Fire Equipment in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars, noting this is equipment for the new engine.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Service Director Kohler.
I request a motion to approve the purchase of a new columbarium from Georgetown Marble and Granite in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Motion.
Seconded, are, are we full with the other ones?
It's getting, it's over a half way.
Wow.
Um, and with the tariffs that are going in place, they're holding the price for us to purchase this.
How long have we had those available? For purchase?
Uh, we've had them for about three, four years.
Have we changed the price at all?
Uh, not yet.
Of what it costs to get them?
Not yet, but it will go up when we start selling those, this one.
Are there finite, is there a finite amount of them available?
In them, yeah, there'll be. I don't know how many are left in that one, it's over, well over half.
Mm-hmm.
Full, but this is a forty-eight net, so we'll have another forty-eight on hand.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You may wanna just take a look at costs and things and front-run some of that a little bit with, because the there's gotta, I mean, there's probably not a lot of maintenance down the road, but there's some, you know, that you never, it, it's not like it's a reoccurring fee for somebody.
Yeah.
All right, where are we at with that again? I forget.
We had a motion in a second.
All right, there's our discussion, anybody else wanna talk about that? All right, roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Right. John, you up again?
I request a motion to approve the payment of twelve thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents payable to Compass Minerals for the additional tons of salt for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season.
You have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Done.
I request a motion to approve the purchase of a rust prevent, prevention for twelve vehicles by laser line in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars.
So moved, second.
Motion in second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Done.
I request a motion to approve the new special hauling permit with a fee of one hundred dollars.
Why are we proving this?
I can chat on this a little bit, um, so this pertains to any oversized vehicles, the, the Ohio Revised Code permits townships to regulate vehicles that may excessively damage roadways within the township, for instance. Um, one example of that is a lot of hauling that's going on in the southern portion of the township as well. So we have regular regulatory authority, and so John has been working on figuring out the best way to make sure that any heavy vehicles doing damage throughout the township are regulated where they can actually, we can actually have them fix the road, bring it back to standard, that sort of thing.
So this is a fee to the state?
No, this is a, the fee is a hundred dollar application that the hauler would have to pay to the township.
Oh.
So they have to fill out an application to the township, and the township would make sure that they meet the requirements and actually put the road back to standard for any damage that they've done.
What does the application consist of? I mean, generally, is it a one-page, two-page, ten-page?
I believe it's one page.
Weights of trucks, how much information do you have to put in there?
Yeah, John can speak to a little, in a little more detail, but it pertains to, you know, the contact information, the types of vehicles, the timeframe for which they're doing it, and then um, there's provision as well in the ORC for, um, bonding and also repair and that sort of thing.
And it's not a hundred dollars for how often, uh, for one, like, how does the fee work?
I think it's one hundred dollars, I think it's proposed as one hundred dollars for just the application, and there's a timeline on there, I think you can approve it for a certain period of time, sixty days, ninety days, a year, that sort of thing.
Up to three hundred and sixty-five days.
How would it be enforced?
Our service, our service department.
I will be very interested to revisit this in a year and see how many people submit applications.
So this is.
Oh, sorry, I'm good, sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand, so that we're, you're requesting a John, uh, a motion to approve, uh, our establishing the fee, right, as a township, is that correct?
Well, it's establishing the fee and to create this permit.
And the process.
So that basically, like, where they're crossing the road down around Back George, and they keep closing the roads, road and so on and so forth.
Uh.
The damage that they have done, we have nothing legal binding that they have to pay us or pay to fix that road. Where we will make them, they fill this out, then they're held, they can be held liable to have to fix that road through, through having the bond.
So I get it, I think I got it now, so they'll, this is for the fee for them to apply, and then that agreement, if you will, or the application will bind them to repairing. Is it binding? Binding, okay, to repairing any damages, right? Okay, and this is an ORC, right, that allows us to do this?
Yeah, so the ORC, and the thing that got us moving on this was the county engineer's office asked for our recommendation on the road closure, street lighting, and everything down for Back George. And the board did not take action, but, so the engineer's office went ahead and just approved the hauling, so the lights are down there, they're moving trucks and doing everything, and the engineer's office said, well, you can go ahead and pass, you know, uh, put an application in, in place in accordance with the ORC if you want, but otherwise, we're approving them. And they usually offer us the opportunity to make a recommendation, but since we didn't take action, they just went forward and proceeded. And so we said, okay, well, we'll put together, we'll put this together since the ORC allows us to regulate this. It might be on rare occasions that heavy hauling vehicles are gonna be moving, but this does offer us the opportunity to regulate it.
Okay, it's fairly cheap, I mean, the fee is only a hundred dollars. I think it should be more. I would increase it.
Okay.
I mean, but, okay.
The, the fee to get the permit to be allowed to do it is a hundred dollars, but But there's gonna be, there'll be a bond in place for like ten million dollars, I believe.
Will they pay for that?
Yeah, they will have to put a bond, they will have to pay in, in insurance bond.
Okay.
They will have to, and then if the road is not, if they tear up the road while they're doing their job, while they're doing what they need to do, then that bond will ensure that we get paid to fix that road.
Okay, so they'll be responsible for not only the fee, but also for paying for the bond. Got it. Thank you very much.
Boy, okay.
Over.
Took a little while to get to the bottom of that one. All right. Anything else? That seems like a good idea.
Yep, I'm in agreement. I'll make the motion. Seconded.
Motion in a second, roll call.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
All right, John, anything else?
It's all I got.
Thank you, John.
All right. Christine.
Motion to initiate the Nature Works Grant through O D N R for right of way acquisition for the Jenny Lynn Trail Connector. Total cost for right of way acquisition is a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred. The local twenty five percent match would be twenty seven thousand eight hundred. Match funds may be drawn from the Glen Mary Tiff.
Okay.
But there, there would be notice first, and this is just to make the application, the pro patent for the grant.
Gotcha, all right.
So Nature Works usually is a, a county by county allotment of funds. How much are we, are we anticipate are, would be the ask from this program?
We don't have that num, that exact number yet. I think, I believe each county has a certain maximum you're allowed to apply for, and I believe Claremont has less than this total amount, so we haven't figured out the exact amount.
Yeah, you just want to brutal. Is any of this portion, is it in, in the part where we had a grant from INRAC for anything?
Yes.
Because if there's a parcel that's inside INRAC, think about using INRAC for trail work. Because they've changed the laws on it, on Natural Resource Advisory Council funds, because you can use INRAC funds to cover cost of trails inside of an INRAC project.
So the, the second part, the second request of that would.
Yeah.
The trail will save to be claimed fifty percent of the trail is the INRAC parts.
Okay, but, but on that piece, you can pay for it with INRAC. Yeah, cuz it sounds like what you're trying to do is you're, you're piecing together a local match. And, and so I get that. I totally get that. And, and has anybody made a motion on this one yet?
No.
That's so move. Um, so, but I'm saying if we can get twenty thousand out of this, thirty thousand out of that, and it just, we piece it together, that's the way we're going to get it done. So just don't rule out INRAC for that fifty, fifty percent part. So.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, any other discussion on this? Roll call.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
All right. Uh, let's see. Thank you, Christine. Eddie, you're up.
There is one more related. I request a motion to initiate the O K I Transportation Alternatives Grant application for the Jenny Lynn Trail Connector. The total project cost is seven hundred sixty six thousand three hundred fifty dollars fifty two cents. The local match would be twenty five percent, one hundred ninety one dollar, one hundred ninety one thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars sixty three cents. Match funds may be drawn from the Glen Mary Tiff. So similarly, this is just to put the application forward.
So could you repeat that other number, please?
The total project.
The local match.
The local match would, would be twenty five percent, which is one hundred ninety one thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars and sixty three cents.
That's a chunk. I don't, do, do we have that kind of cash inside of?
Not, not yet.
Yeah, I don't think we've got that kind of cash, but you're gonna use it to show us local match, correct?
Yes, I, the number is, I put that over two hundred fifty.
Yeah, but we're also using it to pay off INRAC.
Yeah.
So there's, there's something already in there. I don't want to pay twice.
Uh, so we'll get this, this along. We won't, again, this is not going to be a dispersal, this is just put the application.
Understood, understood, but when we apply, see, O K I is a very particular group of, of folks. And as we put that application in, they're gonna want to check the validity of our application. Uh, and so they're gonna want to make sure that we have, when we say we've got TIF money, we better have TIF money. Um, so that's, that's important. They're gonna want to see, they, they want to see that there's something real there. Now, I've put in applications before to O K I, and I've used a lot of smoke and mirrors, but now it's getting a lot, particularly this program, um, it gets a lot more touching. So I, I would, I would make sure that the dollars that we show as local match are real dollars, not something that we're hoping to have. So, yeah, definitely get with, with Debbie, but I, I move.
So in the event that we don't have the funds, when, if we were awarded the grant and we, the funds aren't there in that particular TIF, where would those funds come from?
We would have to, we'd likely have to go to another TIF, likely the pro TIF would benefit as well, the opportunity, but we will revisit back with this board before we would do that.
Okay. I'll second.
All right, motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
And Mister Kelly.
Yes.
All right.
Um, I request a motion to approve employee health insurance renewal for the new plan year beginning August first, twenty twenty five with Jefferson Health Plan as recommended by the Center for Local Government Insurance Pool. The increase will be five point five percent over the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six plan year.
Is Jefferson Health Plan replacing U H C or is that United Healthcare?
It, it's the same plan.
Okay.
And for reference too, the last two years have been seven point five percent increases, so this is actually a, a lower increase than we had in, anticipated in years prior.
Right. I mean, is Jefferson Health Plan the different, is, are they replacing United Healthcare? Or is that just a broker?
That's just a broker.
Okay, all right, motion.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
And Mister Kelly.
Yes.
The next several motions here, twenty through twenty four, pertain to resolutions of necessity uh, due to the fact that the twenty twenty five police levy did not pass. So we're working on putting together options for the board to review at the upcoming meeting. And so these would be uh, sent to the auditor's office and determine what the actual amounts that would be raised for those different varying ups would be. So I request a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five oh oh nine, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty seven oh five dot one nine J for two point five mils.
Moved.
Second. Motion and second, roll call.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five zero one zero, a resolution necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty seven oh five one nine J for two point six mils.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five zero one one, a resolution necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty seven oh five dot one nine J for two point seven mils.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five zero one two, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code section fifty seven oh five dot one nine J for two point eight mils.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
And Mister Kelly.
Yes.
And I request a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty five zero one three, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code fifty seven oh five dot one nine J for two point nine mils.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
No.
No. Mister Kelly.
Yes. These are just to submit for information from the auditor's office.
But we received two point nine.
What's that?
But we received two point nine, the point taking it again.
Oh, we already got the information.
Well, we got it when we took it to the, that's what we took to the polls.
Right, I just didn't know if anything changes at all from now and from then until now.
It could, it could update, but we just, you know, it passed anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really care. I just want to make sure we got accurate information, but, all right. Uh, so I have two yassas, Debbie, roll call.
You already did it.
They're already do, oh, okay, gotcha. All right.
Said no.
That's right, that's right. Eddie, uh, you got one more?
Oh, yeah, so, uh, the last one I have is, um, a motion to initiate the tax increment financing ten year seventy five percent process in accordance with fifty seven oh nine dot seven three B for the site located at one hundred Pondview Drive. This is the Amelia Health Center Tiff that we will initiate, send the letters out, and then bring it back to you in June.
Uh, motion.
Um, here's my question now. Do we want to take a swing at a thirty year? This isn't a residential, so the school might be in a different negotiating mindset. Um, given that there's not going to be additional burden on the school, but there would be tax opportunity here. Should we take a run at a thirty year TIF instead of a ten seventy five?
You want, you want me to report back to you on this? I can, I can do some research and dig on it for you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to move quickly, but
Okay.
For the same token, I don't want to miss anything that might be an opportunity. Um, and a ten seventy five, while it does allow us to get around the school, I don't know that I necessarily, I'd like to see what they would say. I mean, we still have that, you know,
Okay.
that arrow in our quiver if we need it, if they aren't willing to negotiate, but given the fact that generally they seem to be less. If this were an apartment complex, I think we might have a different discussion, but it's, given this is what it's outlined to be, the school may be in a mindset of giving us a thirty year TIF, which would be great.
Okay.
So, I mean,
You're gonna look into it.
Okay. I can do that. I can look into it and report back.
Man.
Yeah, sounds good.
Take this one.
Table, table that. Anything else, Eddie?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, public comment, open floor discussion. Does anybody have anything they'd like to come up for? If so, I apologize, you'll have to come on up here, and if you want to, you come, will you come up, Danny, or?
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up. You just have to turn that microphone around. Sorry, I had to turn the wrong way for the fire Johnson.
Good evening. Many of you know me. I'll introduce myself. My name is Dennis Luke, and I was a resident here in Pierce Township from two thousand and five through two thousand and twenty three. I was here for the uh, promotion ceremony tonight, but there's some things I need, I felt compelled to share with the community as well as trustees. In two thousand and seven, when the police levy, we put a police levy on, I served, proud to serve as the secretary for that levy. That levy was expected to go for eight years through two thousand and fifteen. That levy lasted through to twenty twenty five. The professionalism in this apartment, when we became residents, has grown exponentially over those years. And uh, it's, it's a proud department, and it's sad that the uh, tax levy just passed. But it is important that left, that any future levies get through, the residents must understand that this apartment is a great apartment. They need equipment to provide and also to perform the task. It's a difficult task in law enforcement. I served forty years in law enforcement. I conducted a number of investigations in conjunction with the Pierce Township Department. And you folks should be proud of the police department you have here, and you need to do everything you can to make sure that any future levies are passed. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's just unfortunately that they didn't pass, time is not right or whatever. But this is a great apartment, and they need your support. You've got great police officers, and to see what this apartment has done between two thousand and five, when we moved in, to the professionalism and staff that they have on the mound. I'm requesting everyone support any future levies for the police department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Gail Dabney. I am on the board for Woodside Park subdivision. We've had a few people move into the, the neighborhood recently, and they're asking the request for a yard sale. Typically, since I've lived in the township since two thousand eight, two thousand nine, it was like the first weekend of uh, June
Hmm.
that this was allowed. Um, and as far as I know, nobody filled out any permits or what have you, okay? Uh, I am requesting that again this year
Mm hmm.
Um, to see if I can provide our new residents with the option to get rid of some of their, their wares. Um.
I don't remember, but I think that when we passed the motion a year ago, I believe, um, we said that it would be the first weekend in June, and that it was in perpetuity. But that's not something that the township put together necessarily. That's something that the community actually put together. Um, and so, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't.
I've been communicating with the, the township, you know, um, through the website, and they, I keep coming back with the same answer, you know, you know, supply a permit, you know, come fill out a permit, come fill out a permit.
I think.
And it's like, if I could just send out a Facebook, you know.
I thought what we did, if we could dig up that motion, I thought what we did is that for that weekend, we, we lifted the notion that you had to have a permit.
Yeah, there, there was like a blanket approval.
Yeah.
For, for, you know, and, but there, there, we also have a portal on the website to apply for
Right.
a garage sale, like in, you know, October or something, but otherwise we have a blanket sort of approach.
We could just be proactive, have Carl put something on Facebook and say, you know, this is, I think there's already graphics for it.
Yes.
That.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we can reinforce it.
Yeah.
That I, I take calls about it, I, yeah, it's a little like formal, and just let people know that that first weekend in June, I believe it's only Friday and Saturday.
Yes.
So.
Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, cuz there was always this discussion about there needed to be a preview day, so they'd already put their stuff out, and then people would go around and preview the stuff, and then they'd come back and buy it on Saturday, so.
I don't. I don't, I don't want to mess with all that stuff. But, um, so if it's going to be Fri, or Friday and Saturday.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and put a blast out there on our website to let people know.
Do you guys see any reason why not?
I don't think there's a problem there at all. We probably should look at that automated response, if that's what it is, and say, unless you're, you're requesting a yard sale for between such and such dates, you know, uh, you do need to apply for a permit, whereas if it's within that timeframe, you do not.
Put under, put in parentheses, no permit needed.
Yeah, uh, we just need to get it probably on the website too somewhere where it just stays there, uh, and then maybe a calendar reminder next year so that we don't have to revisit, and it just happens each year for the first technically Friday and Saturday, right?
Right.
That would be awesome.
It sounds like a great idea.
Then as people are unpacking, they can say, okay, yard sale.
Yard sale.
Key, yard sale, donate, yard sale.
Cause I recall there was a delay on, on setting the date because we were trying to check when Batavia would have theirs, and there was somebody else we were checking to make it, and Richmond didn't have theirs.
Yeah, that's in the Batavia, yeah.
I don't remember a lot of things, but this is coming back.
Yeah, like Alan said, it probably would be a good idea just to glance back at the motion to, we had, just to be sure it's consistent with what we're discussing right now.
That's why.
All right, thank you.
That was easy, wasn't it?
So, you know, and I told him, you know, he, they, you know, give the damn little call, but
Yeah.
it's easier if somebody acts on it.
There you go.
Well, got it done, so. You're welcome.
All right. Anybody else? Well, okay, we're gonna have to hop into executive session to discuss a few things, so, um, we have three motions regarding executive session. We have a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section one two one point two two G one to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee.
Motion.
Seconded.
Motion and second, roll call.
Um, Mister Campbell.
Yes.
Mister Freeman.
Yes.
Mister Kelly.
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by Ohio Revised Code Section one two one point two two G three to conference with the township attorney to discuss imminent or pending litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mister Freeman.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Motion to adjourn a new executive session as permitted by Ohio revised code section 121.22G8 to discuss confidential information related to an economic development prospect.
Motion.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kevin.
Yes, so we're gonna adjourn into executive session. I don't know exactly how long we'll be in there or if they, I cannot guarantee action will not be taken out of executive session. So if you want to stick around, feel free to do so.
All right, we're back out of executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Eddie, you have a motion you'd like to present?
Yep.
Um, staff request a motion uh to au- to authorize or the administrator request a motion to authorize staff to execute an exclusive operating agreement with Shangri-La Monroe West LLC.
This agreement has some uh details but generally is consistent with the two operator sort of policy. This has been through uh other channels within the township already. Is that correct, Eddie?
That's correct.
Okay.
A motion seconded.
Motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Do we have any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Done. Cool.